Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Eric, would you do the determination of quorum, please?
James Barnes.
Here.
Sarah Savilecik.
Here.
Larry Chesney.
Here.
Francine Doncic.
Here.
Phil Heran.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Donna. All right, Mr. Chesney, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chesney.
Mr. Barnes.
All right. Mr. Edwards, ethics law announcement, please.
Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, you have received a gift or loan, you have a pecuniary interest or commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship, you must disclose that gift, loan, interest, or commitment at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, you must abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it is clear that the gift, loan, interest, or commitment would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the planning commission rules, if you have had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Webb, could we have the appeal procedure, please?
With pleasure. Most decisions rendered by the planning commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the planning commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within ten calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the planning commission chair and/or the secretary of the planning commission, filed with the secretary of the planning commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceedings being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at three two eight six one zero zero, that's three two eight sixty one hundred, for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee. For the audience, I might mention that all of the public hearing items, items nine, A, B, and C, are appealable. For a little bit of clarification and for the audience's sake, item nine A is a master plan amendment. If the planning commission adopts the master plan amendment, that case moves forward to the Board of County Commissioner for final action. Item nine C is a development code amendment, and the planning commission makes a recommendation of approval on that. It too will move forward to the planning commission. And for both of those, if there's a denial, then of course those actions are also appealable.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Eric or Donna, do we have any general public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one person who's signed up for public comment, Mr. Greg Pro.
Mr. Pro.
Thank you. For the record, Greg Pro.
I don't think, your mic's not on.
For the record. Greg Pro, formerly at twenty-four hundred La Jolla Lane, Spanish Greens, Nevada, eight nine four four one. Formerly planning commissioner for District Four. Chairman Barnes, Vice Chairman Savilecik, Commissioner Chesney, Commissioner Heran, Commissioner Doncic. Words fail me in expressing how honored I have been to serve with you, to help move Washoe County forward, making it a safe, secure, and healthy community, to be a leadership force in Nevada. The role that we played together is invaluable, listening to the voice of our citizens, taking their complaints and their positive input, squishing it together and coming out with resolutions. These last several years have been some of the greatest time of my life. I will cherish it for the rest of my life. I will not forget you. When I get down to Tucson, which will be Saturday, I'll become a resident of Arizona on Saturday. I'll look back fondly on this time. I will miss each of you. I will hold you in the highest regards, and I thank you. Mr. Webb, same with you and your leadership. Counselor, of course, every bit you helped us with. Such a great experience in my life, and I thank you for that. I thank you for that a lot. I brought my badge to give to you guys, so you don't have to hand my for my successor, the little, what were the maps here were on this, so you don't have to go out and buy another one, keep the cost down in the county, okay? Again, thank you so much, and it's been an honor.
Thank you, Mr. Pro, and I guess we can't really comment during the general public comment area, but we did have a resolution for you at our last meeting, and we made comments about how we felt about you. They're very mutual to what you said here. And I think we will try at some point here to take a group picture if we could with the resolution, so if you could stand by for a little bit, we'll try to do that fairly soon. Okay, thank you very much. Any other general public comment, Eric?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I think we're gonna do it in a few minutes. Okay, the next item is possible action to approve agenda, and I'd like to ask before we approve that if we could move item nine B to the front of the agenda, because I think we're gonna have a request to continue that item, so if we do approve the agenda, it would be with that change.
Move to approve with item nine B moving forward.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sarah and a second by Francine. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved with the change of moving item nine B to the beginning of the agenda. Okay, item seven is possible action to approve March seventh, two thousand seventeen draft minutes.
Move to approve.
I second.
Okay, motion by Sarah, second by Francine. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the March seventh, two thousand seventeen draft minutes are approved. Okay. I think this might be a good time then to take the group picture with Mr. Pro, so should we do it down in front of the, yeah, in front of the dais here? Okay, now let's take item nine B, and I'd like to ask Mr. Church to come forward, please.
For the record, Captain Church.
Yes, would you state your name? Okay, and I believe, Mr. Church, you'd like a continuance, is that correct?
Yes, we both agree, we'd like to continue with the June.
Okay, the June agenda, I believe that would be June sixth, then? Okay. Let's see, does the, does the planning commission want to take action on this, then? Yeah, I think we need a motion and a second and a vote.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, before you act, you should open the floor to a public comment. If there is anyone here, it is being continued, but in case anybody wants to speak now.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak on item nine B? Okay, no public comment? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, could you have a motion, please, Mr. Chesney?
I move that we continue item nine B to the June second meeting, is that?
June sixth.
June sixth meeting.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Larry, a second by Francine. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we will go ahead and continue the item nine B until the June sixth meeting. You're welcome. Okay, we'll close item nine B, and we'll go to item, I believe item eight B is our next item. This is possible action to appoint a member of the Washoe County Planning Commission to serve as an alternate member on the Washoe County Design Review Committee. Mr. Webb?
Mr. Lloyd's not here this evening. As noted, this is for possible action for the planning commission to recommend an appointment of a current planning commission member as an alternate to the Washoe County Design Review Committee, which is a subcommittee of this planning commission. Currently, the Design Review Committee's primary representative from the planning commissioner is Commissioner Chesney. The position of alternate has been vacant, and vacant for a while. This action is to ask commissioners to have one of, as a vote, to designate an alternate to the Design Review Committee, what we call DRC, and also to authorize you as a chair to appoint the alternate. What that would mean is then staff would get to you the actual appointment later, later on, and then you would sign that as a chair based on the designation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Webb. Would anyone like to suggest someone to be appointed as the alternate member to the DRC?
Who's interested?
Anyone interested in that?
Francine, are you?
They review landscaping, the actual design of the projects.
Paint colors.
Colors, all that sort of.
Trees.
And when do they meet?
Pardon?
When do they meet? Is there a set year? When do they meet?
Nine, nine o'clock, Thursday mornings, whenever we have a project to approve.
The meetings aren't regular. It depends on when a project is really at the final, kind of final stages. I mean, because they're dealing with things like where the light posts are gonna go, and what type of, what species of fir is gonna be planted on the perimeter. I mean, it's real detailed stuff right down at the end, so it's just sort of ad hoc as projects come online. And then once that's done, an agenda is posted under the open meeting law and it's held in accordance with that.
It's the second Thursday. It would normally be the second Thursday of the month at nine o'clock.
And I think we've had one in the last twelve months, one or two.
Two in the last twelve months, yeah.
And you're the alternate.
That would work.
So that's a yes?
Yes, I would be interested.
Okay.
I had to check to see.
Well, Mr. Chair.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll third it.
We have a nomination by Mr. Chesney, second by Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then you will be appointed, Francine, and I'll sign the paper for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Item eight C.
Mr. Chair, sorry, you do need to open it for public comment if there is any. I don't know if there is.
Oh, we do take public comment on this, then?
Yes, it's planning and hearing items that are action.
Okay, all right. Is there any public comment?
No, Mr. Chair, there are no public comment.
Okay, and let's go to item eight C. For possible action and review to authorize transmittal of the two thousand sixteen Washoe County Regional Plan Annual Report. Mr. Webb, would you like to give us a brief discussion on, description on what this item is?
For possible action and review to authorize transmittal of the two thousand sixteen Washoe County Regional Plan Annual Report to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission and the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Governing Board on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission, to include any amendments that would incorporate planning commission comments from this evening.
Okay, Chad, are you the presenter on this? Okay.
Good evening, Chair Barnes, members of the planning commission. This is, I'm Chad Geesinger, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Division, and this is agenda item eight C, the two thousand sixteen Washoe County Annual Report on the Regional Plan. In counties with a population of a hundred thousand, between a hundred thousand and seven hundred thousand, that has comprehensive regional planning, i.e. Washoe County, state statute requires each local planning commission to submit an annual report by April first of each year. The report is submitted to both the Regional Planning Commission and the Regional Planning Governing Board for their approval. And the purpose of the report is to identify jurisdictional progress on implementing the regional plan by reporting any actions taken within the previous calendar year, which furthers implementation of the regional plan, and also any work proposed for the next fiscal year that will further implementation of the regional plan. Over the years, the format of the report has varied quite a bit, and the level of detail provided has varied quite a bit, but in recent years, the the report has been somewhat streamlined and standardized by Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, and they've come up with a template. In two thousand fifteen, that template was revised somewhat to allow more reporting flexibility by the local jurisdictions, and this two thousand sixteen annual report uses that same template. Of note, only those items which are directly related to Washoe County's implementation, actions, and/or responsibilities are relevant to this report and included in this report. The report template tracks and addresses the major topic areas of the regional plan and consists of five general components listed here on this slide. Regional form and pattern, natural resource management, public services and facilities, a general review of the two thousand twelve regional plan, and any planned actions for the next fiscal year that will further implementation. The first three are modules within the regional plan, as I'll explain further. So the first topic, regional form and pattern, module one of the regional plan. This section has policies and actions that generally manage growth. It's the meat and potatoes of the plan. So it addresses things like the location of urban, suburban, and rural growth, where it will happen, where services will be extended in the future, so the Truckee Meadows Services area, as well as the future services area, the rural development area, so outside, all the area outside the Truckee Meadows Services area, cooperative planning, which is a result of the two thousand five settlement agreement, and affordable housing. Just a refresher for the planning commissioners, this is a very simple graphic of the current state of the Truckee Meadows Services area. The light blue are, is the county Truckee Meadows Services area, and then the darker blue is Reno, and Sparks is the beige. The, everything outside of that in the black is basically the rural development area. So this report is covering the light blue and the darker color. So what does the report say about regional form and pattern and what's occurred over the last calendar year? The county has processed a couple of master plan amendments, and those were found in conformance with the regional plan. And staff also resolved a limitation on density in the Gerlach Suburban Character Management Area. Staff worked with regional staff to come up with a solution to a conundrum. Technically, the Gerlach area is in the rural development area and is covered by our regional plan policy one point one point five, which limits new master plan designations to five acre density or greater. Were able to resusess for a resolution on that, and that allowed conformance of amendments that the county had already approved to support economic development and housing diversity in Gerlach. Just a couple of accomplishments. Regarding cooperative plans and cooperative planning areas, the county has continued to review and comment on city projects in those areas, the most recent of which is probably the steamboat development down south by the Mount Rose Highway, three ninety-five junction. Regarding affordable housing, this is an effort that is ongoing every year. County continued participation in the home consortium, and that results in the distribution of home funds, and it involves coordination with Reno and Sparks directors. Most of that money is obviously funneled into the two cities, but the county does still have a role to play in that process. The second major topic area is natural resource management, which is module two of the regional plan. This module generally contains policies and actions that manage the region's natural resources, and has major topic areas, development constraints area, which prohibits development in certain areas, water management, air quality, open space and greenways, and sustainable development practices. County actions in this area over the last year, development constraints area, the development code actually has many of these policies embedded in it, and the staff has continued to implement those development standards. A couple of examples of where those are found are in Article four eighteen, significant hydrological resources, which has buffer areas and certain development limitations, and then Article four thirty-eight, which are the grading standards for the county, which manages things like slopes and the type of grading that occur in those areas. Regarding water management, always a hot topic in this area. The county has a lot of resources devoted to water planning, and the regional water management plan is basically continuously being updated. A few years ago, changes in state law created the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, and county staff supports that commission as well as continued assistance to the Flood Management Authority and the Truckee River Flood Project. Open space and greenway plans, this is an area where the county has a lot to offer as far as the regional form and pattern goes because of the more rural nature of the unincorporated area and the proximity of such a large array of recreational resources. So there's a lot to report in this area. Over the last year, the county completed work on the Ballardini Trailhead and is continuing to work on creating a connection between the Thomas Creek Trailhead and the new Ballardini Trailhead. There's also plans in the works to purchase an additional one hundred and one acres in the Ballardini Ranch area. Staff is also successful in using federal grant money to create two scenic byway corridor management plans, one for the Mount Rose Highway and one for Washoe Valley. These are very specific federal plans that offer additional benefits to the county. There was also work commenced on Hunter Creek Canyon Trailhead easement expansion to make that a little bit better access for the public there, and also some construction improvements, a bridge across the river, restoration efforts of previous disturbance of OHV trails, that sort of thing. Continued ecosystem restoration, noxious weed treatments. And then the Little Valley Fire, tragic fire earlier this year, created the need for major restoration and stabilization effort in that drainage, and the county created a team to address that. And then the county also participated in the formation of the Eastern Sierra Trails Coalition, which will work on coordinating trails on the Eastern Sierra Front. The third major topic area, public services and facilities, module three of the regional plan. These, this includes policies and actions that coordinate and ensure the adequate provision of public services and facilities concurrent with new development. Covers topic areas such as regional transportation planning, wastewater services and facilities, and the public services and facility elements of the local jurisdictions. Actions in this area over the last year, regional transportation planning is essentially ongoing continuously within the county. County staff attends the technical advisory committees that develop both the short range and the long range transportation improvement programs, so that's been ongoing the last calendar year. There's also continued efforts underway to obtain funding and implement bike and pedestrian improvements on Sun Valley Boulevard. And then also, always want to point out, there's always ongoing maintenance of a large amount of roadway within the unincorporated county as well as maintenance of storm drain systems and ditch cleanouts and preventive maintenance. The public service and facilities element of the Washoe County Master Plan is the main component of how the county conforms with the regional plan on this topic. After the two thousand twelve update, the county was tasked with updating that plan to include better concurrency management policies for a variety of reasons that has yet to occur, but at this point, staff is proposing to update that after the outcome of the two thousand seventeen regional plan update, which is currently underway. It doesn't seem to make sense to finally update it now, because policies may change in this update, and then we will address all of those changes after that and do a comprehensive update of that element. Lots of activity in the wastewater services and facilities. Lots of activity in the wastewater services and facilities arena. Many people may not realize this, but the county owns and operates three wastewater treatment facilities in the region, as well as sewer collection systems in four different areas. County staff has continued to work on converting subdivisions that were approved with individual septic disposal systems, converting those to wastewater, community wastewater systems when funding and opportunities become available. There is also ongoing regional coordination on extending systems to new development when that occurs, and also updated facility plans to accommodate planned growth. And so as master plan amendments, for example, come forward and are approved, those facility plans have to take into account the changes in the master plan designations. And then finally, the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission is looking at plans to expand uses of highly treated effluent, and this is a result of, I believe, a 2015 legislature that made some changes in that arena and more flexibility to be able to use that resource. And if that is able to occur, that'll improve water supply and also how much effluent goes back into the river. Fourth topic area, general review of the 2012 regional plan. Staff does have a list of items that we would like to see changed in the regional plan, but we're going to bring that up during the 2017 update, so we're not really going to get into detail on it in this annual report. So we will potentially try to incorporate those into this update, and then any changes that the three local jurisdictions identify as part of this update, we will also obviously try to get into the updated regional plan. And staff has dedicated two members, and the director is also going to be directly involved in this update, which I believe is planned, they're hoping to complete by March of 2018. And then the fifth topic area, planned actions for next fiscal year, it's pretty much the being involved in the 2017 update. If that update is successful, completing by March of 2018, we might have a little bit of time left in the reporting period to start work on changes necessary to conform to the updated plan, but likely it'll take a little bit more time, but those are essentially the planned efforts for next year, the continuation of ongoing efforts I previously discussed, and then addressing any changes that come out of the update. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review the report and provide staff with any additions or deletions you deem appropriate, and then authorize staff to submit the report on your behalf to the Regional Planning Commission and the Regional Planning Governing Board. This motion is included in your packet, so I'll just go ahead and skip on over that and go to questions.
Any questions for Chad?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We can start down there.
Yeah, let's start with Mr. Chesney.
Can you tell me what WC1 funding is? Is that federal funding or?
That was a tax measure passed, I believe, in 2001, I think. It's been a while now. It was a tax, a local tax that was passed, providing funding to the parks and recreation facilities, and so it's been used every year to build new trails and things like that, trailheads.
Oh, it's not a new tax or?
No.
WC1 stands for Washoe County Ballot Question Number 1 at the time.
Well, there's been a lot of those, though.
Yeah, they don't change the numbers. They just hang onto that WC1.
Sarah, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I was just trying to look through my notes, but apparently those are still, I didn't bring them because those are from previous meetings. Can you help me understand, Chad, why City of Reno and City of Sparks are well underway in their plan updates? And there is areas in the Washoe County plan that we are woefully lax in in terms of coming into compliance on the regional level, and that's why I was looking for my notes. And I think it's specifically with infrastructure and waste treatment and such, that kind of things. And I see that the recommendation is to wait till the 2017 plan from regional is prepared, and then we'll start to work on areas that we're, need to come into compliance. But is there any appetite to be proactive, to start on our plan updates on the areas that we know we're inadequate already?
If I might, I'm going to jump in and answer that and save Mr. Geisinger a little bit there. Two separate topics. The first one is, there's a mandate that once the regional plan is updated, as it happened in 2012, that there's a review of all of the jurisdictions' master plans and a report by regional about where there needs to be steps for conformance. The county did all of its conformance review with the exception of the public services and facilities element, and it was not the entire element. There were only a certain components of that element that required updating, and those were not fatal flaws, but merely having to do, as Mr. Geisinger pointed out, with some of the infrastructure and wastewater, as you pointed out. Again, the reasons for why that plan was not updated at that time or really moot at this point, it's not. What Reno and Sparks have done is their master plans were found in conformance after updates a couple of years ago. They launched separate initiatives to do their own master plan rewrite, so it has nothing to do with a regional plan update. Those are efforts by their city council, actually, directed to their staff, that they wanted to update their master plans in several areas. So again, that's not connected to the regional plan update. So from staff's perspective, we could devote staff time and effort to updating the public services and facilities element based on the 2012 regional plan, or in our view, it's better to have those allocated resources work on the 2017 update in coordination with not only the director, but also the county commissioners, regional planning commissioners as becomes appropriate down the road, and more importantly, with regional planning staff and the other two jurisdictions to become fully involved with that regional plan update process. So it was a conscious decision to take those staff resources, allocate them towards a regional plan update, understanding we're going to take a hit again for not having our public services and facilities element be viewed in conformance for the 2012 plan. But what we'll have to do then is step back, and after the 2017 plan is adopted, now perhaps in 2018, we'll go through that same process again, and then there'll have to be a conscious effort by staff to do what we had done before, which is work our way through all of the elements to make sure that we're in conformance. The second part of your question really has to do with updates in currency specifically to the area plans. That's going to have to be a discussion at the staff level for resources as we begin to move forward for what's appropriate and the timing of any updates, separate from the regional plan conformance of the elements for those area plans.
Okay, and I guess that, so we'll get Chad off that hot seat and I'll put you on that hot seat. If you could give those talking points to your representatives, to the Regional Planning Commission, we would really appreciate that.
And that's part of the plan. Mr. Geisinger and Ms. Kelly, actually, she's in the audience also, are the two planners that are assigned working with Maura Hauenstein, our director, specifically on that. They, as a group, are reaching out to the commissioners, because it's important that we get the Board of County Commissioners' policy direction to staff, and at the appropriate moment, the director is also committed that the region, that the entire planning commission and the regional planning commissioners will receive that policy direction and discussion. So you will be able to carry that conversation forward in your meetings through the update process.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Chad? Okay, seeing none. Eric, is there any public comment?
There are no requests to speak on this side.
Okay, thank you. Do the planning commissioners have any comments on the presentation? Any discussion or comments? Okay, then I guess we need to take the motion. Somebody like to?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chesney.
I move that based on testimony and comments received during the meeting, discussion, and review of this matter by the Planning Commission and inconsistency with the adopted annual reporting procedures and state law, Washoe County Planning Commission directs staff to submit the Washoe County 2016 Regional Plan Annual Report, included as Attachment A to the staff report accompanying this item with the following changes, and we didn't have any changes that I, there was no discussion, to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission and to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Governing Board on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Larry and a second by Sarah. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Chad. Okay, we'll go to Item 9A. That's Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 17-0001, and I'd ask Mr. Webb to identify the general nature of the proceeding.
For possible action hearing and discussion, to approve a text amendment to Table C3 Allowed Uses in the Spanish Springs Area Plan to allow storage of operable vehicles in the neighborhood commercial regulatory zone, subject to the issuance of a Board of Adjustment-approved special use permit. As part of this possible action, staff recommends that the personal storage guidelines of Appendix A of Spanish Springs Area Plan be updated to reflect the allowance of the storage of operable vehicles' commercial use type in the NC regulatory zone, and to clarify that these design guidelines are applicable to this commercial use type throughout the NC regulatory zone in the Spanish Springs planning area. Ms. Mullin is the staff planner.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Any disclosures by commissioners, and this would include ethics and ex parte communications? Mr. Haran?
I received a couple of emails in my Washoe County account, but nothing that would impact my discussion of it.
I received a couple also, probably the same ones that you did. Any other disclosures? Okay, then go ahead and open the public hearing. Kelly Mullin, I believe you're the presenter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. I'm Kelly Mullin, planner with Washoe County. Please excuse me, I'm recovering from a cold, so I apologize if I cough throughout the presentation. So this proposal is a request to amend text within the Spanish Springs Area Plan related to neighborhood commercial property. And to give you a little bit of background on this particular request, the Spanish Springs Area Plan does have its own table of uses, and that is separate from the county's general table of uses that can be found within the development code. An excerpt from that Spanish Springs Area Plan table of uses is shown on the screen, and currently, the storage of operable vehicles is not an allowed use in neighborhood commercial, and that is represented on the table by a dashed line. The applicant is seeking to amend this particular table to allow for the storage of operable vehicles' use type on neighborhood commercial property, subject to the issuance of a special use permit by the Board of Adjustment. So on that table, that would change the dashed line to an S2. We define the storage of operable vehicles as the storage of operable vehicles, recreational vehicles, and boat trailers. Typical uses include storage areas within personal storage facilities and storage yards for commercial vehicles. So based on some of the comments that we've received, it sounds like there may have been some misinformation circulating related to this proposal, so I'd like to take the opportunity to clear up a few things about it specifically. First, I'd like to clarify that there is no change in zoning that's been requested, and this proposal affects existing neighborhood commercial properties only, and only in Spanish And based on some of the comments received, I'd also like to clarify that personal storage, such as mini-storage, is already an allowed use in the neighborhood commercial zone in the Spanish Springs planning area, and that can be done without a special use permit. And then finally, if this request were approved, it would mean that if a property owner of neighborhood commercial property wanted to establish storage of operable vehicles, they would need to obtain a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment in order to do so. And I know that you're familiar, that this commission is familiar with what a special use permit is, but I'd like to explain that just a little bit more for folks in the audience. If someone does apply for a special use permit, it goes through a process that is somewhat similar to this one, except that it would be for a specific project on a specific piece of property, and it would go to numerous agencies for review. It would go to the Citizen Advisory Board. Would also be, we would also provide notice to property owners within 500 feet of the project site. It would be assessed for potential impacts and for its appropriateness to that particular property in the surrounding area. Then the Board of Adjustment would hold a public hearing to determine whether or not to actually grant that request. So brief overview of special use permit process. As described before, this request affects neighborhood commercial zoning only and only in the Spanish Springs planning area. There are approximately 148 acres of neighborhood commercial within the Spanish Springs. That's grouped into three main areas. Those are shown in pink on the screen, and all of those areas are located adjacent to or just off of Pyramid Highway. That first grouping on the bottom of the screen, that's located near the intersection of Pyramid and Eagle Canyon or La Posada. And you'll also see, kind of in the middle of the screen, there's another grouping that's on the east side of Pyramid Highway at Caide La Plata, and then on the top, on the east side of Pyramid Highway, there are a few neighborhood commercial properties at Horizon So in reviewing the merits of this particular request and whether or not operable vehicle storage may have the potential of being an appropriate use in neighborhood commercial, one of the things that we looked at was the personal storage guidelines that are located in Appendix A of the Spanish Springs Area Plan. Those guidelines are specific for neighborhood commercial properties, and as it was identified in the staff report, those guidelines make references to four places, excuse me, they make references in four places specifically to RV and vehicle storage and associated structures. So this is not completely surprising, since RV storage is a common component of many personal storage facilities. However, the importance here is that it suggests that operable vehicle storage was contemplated as a use on neighborhood commercial properties within the Spanish Springs Area Plan, even though this use was not reflected in the use table for the Spanish Springs. Unfortunately, the development code does not distinguish between the storage of recreational vehicles, operable vehicles, or commercial vehicles. It places all three under that storage of operable vehicles' use type, and staff does recognize that although it might be appropriate to allow for RV storage in conjunction with a personal storage facility on a neighborhood commercial property, it may not be appropriate to allow for a commercial vehicle storage yard on that same property. Requiring a special use permit prior to allowing that type of use would allow for a project proposal to be adequately assessed for its potential impacts to surrounding properties and determine if that use is appropriate or not based on the circumstances specific to that project, the subject parcel, and the surrounding neighborhood. Staff does support the proposed text amendment, but recommends that if such change is made, that any storage of operable vehicles in neighborhood commercial in Spanish Springs be required to adhere to the personal storage guidelines that are in Appendix A, and that those guidelines also be updated to reflect that requirement, and Exhibit A1 in your packet has that, those text changes. Notice of the proposal was provided to the owners of 493 properties located within 750 feet of any properties zoned in neighborhood commercial in Spanish Springs planning area. A legal notice was also published in the Reno Gazette Journal on March 24th. A public meeting was held February 8th, where the same folks who were provided with notice for the proposal were invited to attend that neighborhood meeting. We had approximately 30 attendees. Staff also received the six public comment letters and three comment cards that were provided in your packet. We also received a number of emails since yesterday afternoon that were provided to you today. In general, the comments that were received could be broken down into the topical areas that are shown up on the screen. Some of the commenters had expressed concern that commercial property existed adjacent to residential uses. They were also concerned that commercial uses could potentially devalue nearby residential property. Some expressed a desire that no personal storage or vehicle storage be located nearby. There were also concerns voiced about potential impacts related to traffic noise, lights, storm drainage, crime, and hazardous waste from such a use. There were comments made that there was no need for additional facilities for storage of operable vehicles in the area. Some comments also mentioned that having RV storage on a commercial lot may lead to eliminating a person's own ability to store their RV on their property. We had a number of residents from the Shadow Ridge subdivision who expressed concern that such use was not compatible near their neighborhood, same with residential lots near Caide La Plata. We had some comments that were concerned about preserving views within the Spanish Springs Valley, and then also comment that it was preferred that any such uses be located west of Pyramid Highway. So many of the comments that we received, they focused on concerns that So many of the comments that we received, they focused on concerns that would be addressed if a specific project was proposed on a specific property and reviewed by the Board of Adjustment through a special use permit process, but those are difficult to address without a specific project proposal at this time. The proposal was provided to agencies shown on the screen. Most of the reviewers indicated that they reviewed the request and had no comments. However, we did receive comments from Parks and Open Space staff, who requested that any such use in neighborhood commercial, if it is adjacent to a county park, that such use would be required to adhere to the personal storage guidelines. As detailed in the staff report, staff does believe that the required findings for adopting this amendment can be made. We are recommending the adoption of the text amendments as outlined in Exhibit A1. Also adopting and certifying this resolution to be sent to the County Commission, and authorizing the Chair to sign that resolution. If you agree with staff's recommendation, a potential motion has been provided with your packet, also shown on the screen. With that, I'd like to conclude my portion of the presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions. We also have a representative here from Wood Rogers to also provide a presentation this evening.
Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Any questions for Kelly? Mr. Haran?
Early in your presentation, you referenced the fact that the question of RV facilities was kind of mentioned, but it was not mentioned in the table, which you could almost make the case that it was specifically not wanted, because it was left out of the table. I mean, you could draw that conclusion as well, right?
Certainly. It's, it's something that we found it interesting that it was, it was specifically mentioned in conjunction with personal storage facilities in neighborhood commercial in Spanish Springs, and then, you know, that does suggest that it was contemplated as a compatible potential use, but that's one of the reasons here this evening, to see if that is what the Planning Commission desires.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kelly? Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Do we have an applicant presentation? Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Derek Kirkland with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant, the Mankey Family Trust. I think Kelly did a really nice job of outlining this, so I'll just kind of run through a quick things I want, would like to touch on. So the, the applicant, some of the comments we got were, at the public meeting, were, you know, where's your applicant's property? And so we, I talked to the applicant, and the applicant was willing to share where their property is, and I'll kind of touch on where this, what the applicant's request is driving. So they own, as you can see, kind of the, the blowout, it's basically that southeast corner of Pyramid Highway in La Posada. It's about 9.6 acres, zone neighborhood commercial. Again, they, it's, personal storage isn't allowed use on that, we're not looking to change that. They would like to potentially do some car wash, like a car wash facility up towards the corner, kind of in the front, some personal storage within that site. Access is very tough on this, on this parcel, especially with, considering some of the development that's going on, especially in Sparks and some of the areas down towards that southeast area, they're, the lots are a lot smaller. Those folks don't have as much opportunity as some of the Washoe County parcels to, to park their RVs on, within their parcel. So they're looking at this as, as development continues, this is a good location with limited access for people that would like, like to park their RVs in this, in this area. So they are looking at doing some enclosed RV parking here. Just, so that's kind of what's, was driving this, is we looked at the code, you know, how do we, how do we include that RV storage? So the applicant is, with this request, is really looking at a way, you know, can we go to a special use permit, bring a project forward to the community, and, and try to meet those, basically show how we can meet those, those guidelines that are already outlined in the, the, the storage, the personal storage guidelines within the NC zone. Again, just want to highlight that personal storage isn't allowed use on the NC zones, and so really with this table, we're just looking at changing, storage of operable vehicles, or as the applicant refers to it, is RV storage, is really what they're looking at on their specific parcel, change it to a special use permit. We understand that, you know, it may not be appropriate for every parcel, every NC parcel within the Spanish Springs Area Plan. So by adding it with a special use permit, discussions with staff, the applicant was willing to, hey, I'll, I'll bring forward a project when we have it, when we've done the design, and we'll meet all those standards. Some of the other uses I'd like to point out, it, storage of operable vehicles is consistent with other uses just than, other than personal storage facilities. Some of those in the table that you could go straight to building permit would include auto repair, auto cleaning or car wash, and also gasoline services and sales. On that particular corner, you also have two gas stations across the street, so it's, in that location, it, it makes sense for all these types of uses to occur, a lot of them are already occurring there. As we move forward with the special use permit, as I mentioned, some of the other comments we heard, very project-specific, I think the personal storage guidelines already does a pretty, pretty nice job of describing how, how, how we would have to design the facility. One of those is, is constructing walls to basically enclose the facility and screen it from the surrounding properties. So personal storage facilities already have those guidelines, so it makes sense to have RV storage within, within these enclosed facilities. So it's, it's already, the guidelines are there, the applicant's simply just asking, hey, we want a chance to come forward with special use permit and prove that this location makes sense. And I, I think with that, I'll, I'll go ahead and end my presentation, and open it up for questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Kirkland? Yes, Sarah?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Turman. So you keep referring to personal storage, but what I'm hearing you say is a commercial venture to have storage of other people's RVs.
Yeah, that's correct, so per-
So that's no longer personal storage?
Well, the defin, and I don't know if you want to, the definition of personal storage is, I don't know if you've seen the mini-storages, it's, it's a commercial use that's essentially people rent spaces, and when you see a typical mini-storage, they're mini-garages that, you know, 10 by 10, 10 by 20, 5 by 5, where people drive in, they store their stuff there, anything from, you know, right now, personal storage is more like household-type goods. They do, I think in the, the personal storage guidelines, they do allow up to 18-foot tall now. So I mean, it's not, like, these are, are just small units, personal storage facilities as they exist today, would, would be allowed today, are the standard, I don't know if you see, I'm, I'm sure everyone's probably seeing them around, and, and the compatible use, typically you do see them where they're, they have their rows of garages, but then they also have RV parking as well as part of those facilities. So essentially, that's, with the county's definition, you know, we're looking to do something similar that you've already seen, it's just a matter of, just the definitions are different, so we're just asking for a special use permit so that we could come back and show how we can meet those design, design guidelines for the existing commercial use of personal storage.
If I may, personal storage is a use type, and the use type includes mini warehouses.
Okay.
And so, storage of commercial vehicles, different use type. So if the applicant, or any applicant wishes to put mini warehouses, and then also, let's say, store RVs, we would have to evaluate that as two separate use types.
That's what I was just going to ask, yes.
And determine in our use tables, what are each of those use types? Are they allowed, are they not allowed, are they permitted with a special use permit, administrative permit, depending on whatever zone or whatever planning area you're in.
If I may, Mr. Turman?
Yes, Sarah.
And this might be a question more for Kelly, but that specific piece of property, this commission has heard before, because it was partly park.
Park.
And, and the Washoe County wanted to essentially abandon that park and revert to converting this to a commercial use, and then we've seen, so there was a previous owner, and now this is a new owner?
For the record, I'm not sure who the, how that ownership goes, but you're absolutely correct. At one point, that used to be a Washoe County park, and the access problems that-
Still present.
The applicant talk are still there. I think it's more hazardous for young children in the playground, and that's what the county decided, and decided that it was no longer a park. And so there was that whole process the Planning Commission was involved in, that was after a master plan and a regulatory zone amendment, and that was moved to a neighborhood commercial because of its location at the intersection. Makes sense for some type of commercial, so it is now a regulatory zone of neighborhood commercial. I can't speak to the exact ownership, but there was that transfer of ownership and a sale, actually, so the county made money off that old park as a part of that deal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Kirkland? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kirkland. Eric, is there any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are six requests to speak on this item. The first is Gordon Astrom, followed by Diana Christensen.
Okay. Would you come forward, state your name and address, please?
My name is Gordon Astrom. I live at 200 Shadow Ridge, which is way up by that top piece of land up there on your map. And from what I understand, you guys are even working on another 650 homes going in just north of where we're at, and Pebble Creek is just over to the other side. So it's a highly residential area. And I've spent the last 70 years trying to earn enough money to buy a house in that area, and now that I did, I really don't want to have something sitting in front of me that I really don't want there. But anyway, the residential area that we're in, in my opinion, should have residential support services in that front area, restaurants, doctor's office, or something like that, as opposed to RV parking, quote unquote. And I guess this is a little bit personal, because that one piece of land is way up there by itself, and I don't believe that the, they own that land at this point in time. But the problem is, if you change one part, you have to change it all. To me, it'd be a lot easier just to rezone it something else. But going down to that little ballpark down there in the bottom, this is our main street, this is our town, and we would like to have residential support there also, a restaurant, something that is different than a walled-in area with mini warehouses and RVs parked in it. We do have an industrial area across the street from our development. It does have a RV parking area there and mini-storage. That would be a great place to put more of it, it's designed for it, it's, has that type of a feel to that land. I noticed that the staff has approved the change in designation going forward. I would hope that you would not take that same position when you forward the thing to your next level up. I'm sure each one of you has a home somewhere, and you're probably looking out your back door, you really wouldn't want to see an RV parking lot back there. Neither do we. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Christensen, followed by Don Christensen.
Yes, would you state your name and address, please?
I'm Diana Christensen. I reside at 11825 Paradise View Drive, which backs on to the part of what you're discussing today, the two 7.5 areas at the entrance to the Shadow Ridge Housing Development. I stand in opposition to what the Planning Commission has proposed. They say that each piece of property will be evaluated on its own, but you and I know that once the camel gets his nose under the tent, then it's harder for you to say no to another area, because you've already said yes to somebody else. And in our legal society nowadays, where everybody likes to sue everybody else, that leaves us at great risk. I don't want to see it changed to where RVs and boats can be parked in those areas, in the neighborhood commercial areas. I also disagree with placing a great big huge storage area with a car wash and whatever else they want to put on front on our Hollywood and Vine. This is our community, to the best of my knowledge, you, the county commissioners have approved over 2,500 new homes that will go in the area. We need medical, we need dental, we need banks, we need retailers, we need restaurants, we need facilities like that, where people in the community can utilize them. I agree with Gordon that if they want to build a storage unit, an RV, put it over in the commercial area. There's still lots of property in the commercial area on the west side of Pyramid, one and a half miles from the property that they've already purchased. They could sell that to somebody who wants to put a strip mall or other kinds of sustaining things for the community, rather than for bringing in people from outside our community. I would guess that a lot of people will be parking vehicles there on their way out to Pyramid and dumping them on their way back, because that's where that thoroughfare goes through. So what I would like to see the commission do is to recommend to the county commissioners that this, this change not be approved, and that they not receive their special use permit to stick a storage unit on 10 acres of what I consider prime land in the heart of what will develop into our community. In my opinion, this is equivalent of, many years ago, sticking a storage unit on the corner of Virginia and Fourth Street, putting it on the corner of Pyramid and Victorian in the center of the communities, rather than on the outskirts where perhaps it belongs. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Don Christensen, followed by Brian Reeners.
Would you state your name and address, please?
I'm Don Christensen. My address is 11825 Paradise View in Spanish Springs. And again, as my wife just mentioned, our property is proximate to the seven acres that's not under the particular consideration today, but has the same neighborhood commercial zoning that that little triangular piece has down on, it is under consideration. I object to the fact that we have to do, or you folks have to make that determination whole hog or nothing. Each parcel that is designed today is this neighborhood commercial. If you grant that new status, not a rezoning, I understand, but the new status of allowing these vehicle parking, that everybody gets that privilege. I don't know that there's a way around that, just to divorce the property that is proximate to my own from the other properties, but that's my objection, is that you've got to do it all. And as my wife stated, it's the old story of the camel sticking his nose under that tent. I think staff is kicking the ball downfield, instead of taking the stand right now to say, no, we don't want this RV parking to be in this zone. They're relying on whoever decides a special use permit to make that determination. The elevation of the homes proximate to the, to the current area that I'm concerned with, the farther, farther northernmost part of the Spanish Springs area. We sit several feet higher, each, each row of homes is maybe 10 feet higher than the, than the other. So the view from just about anybody, a many commercial development in that 15 acres is going to be terribly impacted. I object to, the applicant doesn't have any skin in the game. He doesn't live in, nearest I can tell, doesn't even live in Washoe County, let alone Spanish Springs or Palomino Valley. I object also to the, what I would call a disingenuous illustration in the, in the last page of the Exhibit H, showing three photographs of a typical, typical RV storage, or, excuse me, a mini-storage thing. Better they should have taken a picture of Mr. Mankey's location on Longley Lane with the gas station and the mini-mart, and it's an eyesore, and I don't want to see that in what I would call Hollywood and Vine, right in the heart of Spanish Springs. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Brian Reeners, followed by Dan Gerhart.
Would you state your name and address, please?
My name's Brian Reeners. I live at 320 Hyacinth Street, and my house backs up immediately to the property off of Eagle Canyon. This would literally be in my backyard, and if they do get RV storage, then the access is going to be at all hours of the day. And if they do get RV storage, then the access is going to be at all hours of the day. Excuse me. All those hours, day and night. Everybody knows you, you know, you get up early to go camping, well, first thing you do is you go get your RV. So you've got idling cars. You've got, trying to hook up the RV is not always the easiest thing. Same with boats, traffic, day in, day out. So I would like to not see RV boat access or any kind of storage dropped in my backyard. My wife and I just purchased the house roughly about a year and a half ago. Spent a lot of time and money to fix the house. It's beautiful. I love my view out of the backyard. I get a view of the mountains. I can literally go out my back gate and take the dogs for a hike, for a run, for a bike ride. I love my house. But what I don't want to see is floodlights, security lighting, in the middle of the night. It's very dark in that neighborhood at night, and I think that's great. It's also very quiet. It's an established neighborhood. And it doesn't make sense to lodge commercial storage, or I know it's personal storage, but RV storage, any storage, in such a quaint, quiet neighborhood. It does make more sense, like the other lady had spoke of, of moving it a mile and a half away. A mile and a half is not enough to inconvenience anybody to drive and pick up their RV or their boat. I work very hard to live in the neighborhood that I do. My wife works very hard. She's a nurse. And she has all kinds of crazy schedules, trying to find sleep when you have security lighting and a diesel that's been running for the last 45 minutes in our backyard. It just, it doesn't make sense. Yeah, the ditch behind there needs work as well. I believe that whole area was originally designed as water runoff. And based on this last year, you can tell we've had a lot of water. That ditch almost flooded over into my back a couple times. I can't imagine adding commercial property back there is going to make runoff any better. It's going to make the property value of all of those homes depreciate quite a bit, I feel. Just, we have about 30 seconds. I really feel passionate about this. I would have come to the last meeting, but I was unfortunately out of town. Please don't let this happen to my neighborhood that I work so hard to live in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eric?
Dan Gerhart, followed by Dan Herman.
Would you state your name and address, please?
I'm Dan Gerhart. I live at 5331 Energy Stone Drive in Sparks, Nevada. And I'm here representing Ryder Homes and Shadow Ridge. And the section that you're talking about, there's three sections. We're the upper one. I'm sure you noticed that. And that, if you change that area, all three of them, it impacts the section right in front of Shadow Ridge. And I would ask you to really think about how that nice community would be affected by RVs parked right in front of it. It just closes off the whole window of the community, and the people living there will be staring at it. And the searchlights, that's, you know, security lights. That would be very annoying, and they're going to be there. So if you allow it down below, like the camel under the tent, it could possibly come up to Shadow Ridge. I would hate to see that. I've spent four years there now, working as a sales manager at Shadow Ridge. And it's a really nice community. And these folks that are all here tonight, speaking against it, live there and enjoy their life there. And so do a lot of other people. When I came there, we only had like 13 homes in the community, had sat idle for five years. Now there's about 160. And it's going to be 390 total. But to put that kind of storage right in front of us closes off our window, and it's going to probably impact property values if that goes, if that would happen there. So I would ask you commissioners to strongly consider not approving this. And I'm speaking for Ryder Homes and myself and the community of Shadow Ridge. Because I was involved with selling these people all their homes there. And with the idea that we're going to have, you know, stores and restaurants and things that people can use in the community right there handy. And that's, I think, what the whole Planning Commission had in mind in the first place, which was wise. With this special, this changing this, with this amendment, I don't think is a good plan. And I ask you to not consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Herman, followed by John Steber.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, sir, Dan Herman. I live on Campo Rico Lane, which parallels Pyramid Highway. I'm caught in the center of eight different commercial, neighborhood commercial properties. Two to the north where these folks live, then just to the south by Kayla Dale Plata. There are six lots in that area, plus all the others that are down, down off Eagle Canyon and Pyramid Highway. The key thing is here is neighborhood commercial. Neighborhood. Put that in back of your mind. It's neighborhood commercial, not industrial, not commercial. It's neighborhood commercial. These folks that'd be right in their front yard, possible. The main problem we got here is one developer, one individual, wants to change the laws, wants to change the allowed use tables so he can do his development. He's affecting everybody else, all the other neighborhood commercials there, and all the other citizens that live around that property. Now I ask you, is that fair? It's not. He should have bought property that is zoned in Spanish Springs in the allowed use table. And clearly, it states right here, industrial. It's an allowed use. I helped, I helped develop these tables. I was involved with Trevor Lloyd doing the area plan. And I tell you, every one of these, we looked at every one of these uses down this allowed use table. And that was specifically not put in there. You've got industrial. There's all kinds of industrial on the west side of the road. There's already an industrial, or there's already an RV storage unit parked right there. Why should this developer change our laws where he can go in and do what he wants on his property by changing the allowed use tables of neighborhood commercial when he can do it on the industrial property, which is right across the street? There's lots of industrial property there, as the, my fellow citizens have highlighted. I'm concerned about the light and noise generating by an operative vehicle, RV access. This is not just a typo change. I mean, the county may, Kelly may come up here and say, oh, it's just a typo. We forgot to put it in there. Wrong. This affects a lot of people. And it was specifically, I mean, if I'm developing something, I'm going to go look at my development. I'm going to look at the allowed use table. And if it says it's allowed, any other developer can come right on any of the other land that you guys, if you're going to change this, the developer, any other developer is going to say, hey, it's allowed. I'm going to do it. So I ask you, please do not change the request, and this is not a special use permit. This is a master plan amendment. I highly recommend that you vote no and do not change the master plan amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Steber.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Thank you. My name is John Steber. I live at 11765 Paradise View Drive. It's in the Shadow Ridge development. Commissioners, I would suggest to you that Commissioner Horan had it absolutely correct. If you look at Page Nine of the 17-page text amendment that you provided to us, it states right there that it can be inferred that the RV storage was anticipated, or at least within the area covered by the Western Theme Designs guidelines. I would suggest Commissioner Horan was absolutely right, that it can also be inferred that since it did not state it, it was intentionally omitted and not included in there. And I admire your foresight to see that, Commissioner. I would also suggest that you would look at Page Three of Exhibit F, where it said, on their response to change conditions, that it would, the request amendment represents more desirable utilization of the land. I would suggest it does not. I would also refer you to, if you would, Page Two of Exhibit F, where under Subsection C, where it says the amendment will not conflict with the public's health, safety, or welfare. Says at the bottom there of that, the response was that the proposed amendment will not conflict with the public's health, safety, or welfare. I'm sorry, but in this whole amendment and all the exhibits here, I don't see any proof to support that. I mean, that's a statement, but I don't see anything that agrees to that. Just by saying the facilities are allowed within the NC zone, how does that justify that it will not conflict with any of this? I would suggest just the opposite, that it does conflict with the public's health, safety, and welfare. I would also direct you to the back page here on Page, well, the Exhibit F, excuse me. The last group of the Spanish Springs area plan there, under the landscape guidelines, it says that landscaping can be done with the trees. But it doesn't say what type of trees or how tall these trees are going to grow. We bought that property in the Shadow Ridge area with the idea that we have this beautiful view of the mountains. But if you're going to put a 40-foot tree there, that eliminates all of that. I would suggest that this is more than just an amendment to change one little parcel, but that it includes everything. And if you do this, it opens up a slippery slope, which I would suggest these commissioners don't want to go down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that was our final request to speak.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay. Are there any commission questions? And this would be for staff, or the applicant, or members of the public? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission for discussion. Do we have some discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chesney.
The applicant has one little small piece of the pie of this entire zoning area. And I, I can't support this in any shape or form based on the use that he wants to put on that piece of property and the effect by allowing this type of zoning on all the other pieces of property. It should be addressed one at a time, based on one, what the applicant's intended use is. This particular piece of property, that little triangle there that was the park, that sits right across the street from the shopping center in Spanish Springs. Traffic is horrendous there now. And as we, as we fight our way through all these amendments and uses, traffic is paramount. And I, I just, I can't support this the way it is.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Sarah.
I would also concur with Commissioner Horan's question, or to say that it could be inferred that, that the absence of RV storage is applicable to an allowed use. So to just imply that it was supposed to be there is not sufficient.
Any other discussion? Mr. Horan?
Well, I would just reiterate what I said earlier and what Mr. Chesney had said. I would remind the audience, however, that it is zoned neighborhood commercial. There will be commercial there. There may not be RV parking, but there will be commercial. So they're allowed to do that. I can't support the application.
Any other discussion? Francine?
I just wanted to go along with the other commissioners that, from what I've heard and from what I'm seeing, that I can't agree that just because it was a thing, that it was inferred that it would be there. I believe as, because I was involved in the past in writing area plans, that if it wasn't there, it's because we didn't want it there. And when we went into the discussions for those meetings, we categorically were ruling things out. So I cannot support this.
Yes, Sarah?
And one final comment, because my fellow commissioners and planning staff are used to me saying this now, that area plans trump everything else.
Any other discussion? Okay, then I'd call for a motion? Yes, Mr. Chesney. I move to deny the application.
I second.
If I might, the maker of the motion is a seconder. The required findings for a master plan amendment are found on Page 11 and 12 of the staff report. If the maker of the motion could then determine which findings the commission is unable to make, so that can be accompanied as a part of the denial, please. And note that the, note that those findings are laid out, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. There's actually six, but the six is effect on the military installation does an effect here. So out of those five, although those analyses are made for support, you can use that actually required finding for which one or ones you cannot make.
Those are Pages 11 and 12 in the staff report.
If I may, Commissioner Chesney?
Yes, you may, Sarah.
Items in review of master plan inconsistency, consistent with master plan. Item one, we can say that it is not in compliance because RV storage was not noted in the plan. It cannot be inferred, which means it's not allowed. And Francine, you said number two.
Mr. Horan?
Well, there are five findings there, and I would suggest that I would have a hard time making any of them.
So where are we at? Okay.
If you're going to deny it, you need to say which ones you're on.
Yeah, you have to say which of the...
Oh, okay. I deny based on not in compliance with the master plan. Doesn't, doesn't fit with compatible land uses. And five, the desired growth pattern.
If I may?
Yes, Sarah.
Into compatible land uses, again, we could reiterate that RV storage is not an allowed use.
Right.
And so this would be out of compliance. And in terms of response to change conditions, as we've noted before, this area has been heavily impacted. And when we're saying development of common space and open space subdivisions, yes, this is a neighborhood commercial. But originally, when we heard this, prior to this, one of the things was taught, discussed, was restaurants, physician offices, the like. So I could say that it was, in terms of smaller residential or lot sizes, there are other options available to the community for personal storage and RV storage.
We're good yet?
Okay, so you have a motion now by Commissioner Chesney, which was to deny. Then he discussed three of the five findings that he did not believe could be made. And then Commissioner Sibilicek, who I think seconded, added some more discussion to that regarding findings. So where we are right now procedurally is Commissioner Chesney, is your motion to deny based on the comments you made about findings coupled with Commissioner Sibilicek's comments on findings?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. And does the chair, does Commissioner Sibilicek second the motion as I just parceled it? Thank you. So now, Mr. Chair, you've got a motion and a second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
I think that we can read into the discussion there that we don't need to discuss it again, that we're not supporting it.
All right. Then I'd go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. All right, thank you.
Appeal, appeal? 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 Any appeal?
Mr. Webb, do you want to discuss the appeal of that?
I already read the appeal procedures again, the denial of a master plan amendment.
The denial of a master plan amendment is appealable to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll go to item... Item 9B has been continued to June 6th, so we'll go to 9C. This is Development Code Amendment Case Number WDCA 16-001, wholesaling, storage, and distribution heavy. And I would ask Mr. Webb to give us a brief discussion of the general nature of the proceeding.
For possible hearing action and discussion, to recommend approval of an amendment to the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110, Article 302, Table of Uses, 110, 302, 054, to allow wholesaling, storage, and distribution heavy, industrial use type, in the general rural regulatory zone with a Board of Adjustment approved special use permit. The discussion may include a determination whether to reflect a minimum lot size, and if approved, to authorize the chair to sign an updated resolution reflecting these amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Now disclosures by commissioners, both as to ethics and ex parte communications? Anyone have any? I have a disclosure. I had a telephone call from John Rhodes, who discussed this matter with me. Okay, then, if there are no other disclosures?
I just received emails, which I did not answer.
Okay. All right, any other disclosures? Okay, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Mr. Young, I believe you are the presenter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I am Eric Young, Senior Planner with Planning Development. We brought this before you just last month on March 7th. We had a fairly robust discussion about the content of this potential amendment to allow an industrial use type wholesaling, storage, and distribution in general rural regulatory zone with a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment. The discussion, most of the discussion revolved around whether or not to include staff's recommended 40-acre minimum. The applicant did not request a 40-acre minimum in the analysis that staff provided. We looked at it and determined that a 40-acre minimum lot size would be appropriate, and so our recommendation was to include that 40-acre minimum. The commission at that time didn't feel that they really wanted to go ahead with that particular recommendation. At that time, they preferred to go with no minimum lot size and rely on the special use permit process for mitigation. So you requested that staff, the only choices that we provided you in the resolution to sign was one with the 40-acre minimum. So your request to staff was to go forward with the recommendation for approval, but to ensure that the county commission understood that your desire was to approve it without the 40-acre minimum. When we were preparing staff reports to take to the county commission, we noticed an error in the text of the draft ordinance and the resolution that was signed. I believe it was the ordinance was going to allow this in the general rural agricultural regulatory zone. So there's a one-word difference, general rural agriculture versus general rural, and we had to bring it back to make sure those are consistent. So this is not asking for any changes to general rural agricultural, it's only to general rural. So that's why we're back before you tonight, is to correct that administrative error. But we thought that we would take the opportunity to provide you, instead of just with the one choice, with two choices. So in fact, tonight, you have three choices to go forward. You can accept staff's recommendation of approving the amendments with a minimum acreage, and that would be the resolution attached on Attachment A. You can decide to go with the resolution that reflects no minimum acreage, which was your desire last month, but against staff's recommendation, that is Attachment D. Or of course, you always have the option of just denying the application. So those are your three options for tonight. I'm not sure how much you would like me to go over again the content of the application and to have that discussion. I'm prepared to have as much of a discussion about the content or the process as you feel you'd like to have this evening, but I was going to leave that up to you about how much to bring back to you tonight.
Yes, Francine?
Yes, I do have a question. You talk about the resolution of virtue general rural agricultural. I went through all my documents. Where in the documents that we were reading, did it mention general rural, or was it just something when you prepared the document for signature that you, that the staff made the error?
Oh, it was clearly my error.
It wasn't in our documents.
To be specific, in the package that you were presented, there is a resolution, and then attached to that resolution is a draft ordinance, and the resolution says that you were recommending that ordinance. The resolution was correct and said that the change, the proposed change, is to allow this in general rural. In the headline, the introductory paragraph to the draft ordinance, it said general rural agricultural. And so the ordinance and the resolution didn't match. That was my error, and I apologize, I apologize to the applicant as well. But that's what we brought it back for tonight, to correct, is to make sure that those two documents say exactly the same thing. They have to say exactly, word for word, the same thing. So that's what we're correcting this evening, but we wanted to take that opportunity in the fact that we had to come back to give you this option that you appeared to be asking for last month, but we didn't make available to you. So I hope that brings some clarity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Young, in this allowed table of uses on page two of four, is it correct to state that the only allowance for, that requires a 40-acre minimum is in the wholesale, storage, and distribution under heavy? None of those other uses require a 40-acre minimum under the general rural classification?
That's correct. We have, in our development code, we use that 40-acre minimum. I think identified three times that we use it, and they are all back in the Development Division 300. One of them is you have to have 40 acres to get the exception for building an accessory dwelling, an accessory structure larger than your house. If you're in general rural and you have 40 acres, you can do that. And there are two other exceptions that are extremely similar to that, but nothing that has to do with a use type or a special use permit, more with granting exceptions.
I would just submit that some of these other allowed uses in general rural that require a special use permit but do not have acreage requirements are much heavier use and have a much heavier impact, and to single out one entity requiring 40 acres is, it baffles me.
Okay, how much of a presentation would the commission like from Mr. Young? Okay. I don't know if it's necessary to go into great detail on this. Maybe we can just see if there are any other questions for Mr. Young? Anyone have any questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Young. We appreciate it. Is there an applicant presentation?
I heard from the applicant this evening, he is spending his evening with the legislature and won't be able to make it. I have heard from quite a few community members. You may remember that another part of the discussion we had last month was that the applicant does have a particular property in mind for this use, but staff did not look at that particular property. We actively tried to stay away from that because it's a little bit different from the Spanish Springs situation we just saw, where it's limited to just a small area in Spanish Springs, and we can identify very easily all the different areas where it would happen. In this particular instance, the change would allow this use with a special use permit on every single general rural parcel anywhere in the county. And that's many hundreds of parcels scattered throughout the county of many different sizes and many different types of characters of neighborhoods. And so it's a little different from that, and we wanted to make sure that we looked at that entire comprehensive picture of what might happen, instead of just trying to focus all on what might happen to one property if this happened.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Young? Okay, seeing none. Donna, is there any public comment?
Yes, we have Delia Greenhall, followed by Lanny Wilks.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Delia Greenhall, and I live at 140 Andrew Lane, Reno, Nevada. I have lived in Steamboat Valley for 45 years, and my property adjoins Gale Willie's. We as a community are deeply concerned and oppose industrial use types in parentheses, heavy, in the general rural regulatory zone, and an amendment to the minimum parcel size of 40 acres. You as a planning commission can cause problems throughout the whole county. As an example, the Gale Willie property in the Steamboat Pleasant Valley, it's a large amount of the 35 acres is unbuildable due to floodplains and a southerly steep hillside. I ask if you have not been out to see the property, that you do before approving any zoning changes. This would be inconsistent with the surrounding area. We request that you do not approve the zoning changes, as it will affect the lifestyle and safety of many residents in our area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lanny Wilks, followed by Paul Howard.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Lonnie Wilks, and I live at 5475 Tannerwood Drive. However, I own the property at 136 Andrew Lane, which borders Mr. Willie's property on two sides. It's been my childhood home, so I know the valley very well. I grew up there. I'm over 60, and now my family lives in the house, so I know more about the valley. We as a community are deeply concerned about the large trucks that are currently using Andrew Lane as their access to the nursery. Trucks have already been arriving before 8:00 in the morning, using a small dirt road off of Andrew Lane to transport nursery supplies. This small dirt road is inadequate to meet the demands of heavy vehicles. In the summer and fall, the road is dusty. In winter, the road is muddy, and in the last flood, the road was washed out, and it became impassable. Besides using a road that is not intended for industrial-sized vehicles, noise pollution to the valley will be increased. Studies show that prolonged noise pollution has negative health effects on people, animals, and the natural habitat. Increased noise pollution does not promote the health or the welfare of the rural valleys. Large trucks using Andrew Lane also pose a safety concern for the bus students on Andrew Lane. Large trucks sharing Andrew Lane does not promote the pub, or large industrial trucks does not promote the public safety of our schoolchildren. Dust, air, and gas emissions also have negative impacts on our communities. Again, how are these increased pollutants conducive to the rural lands? It seems to me, if the general rural regulatory zone needs to be amended two to three times, then maybe that is a sign that it is not in the best interest of the community. Excuse my cold. It does not promote the public health, safety, or welfare, and it does not promote the original purpose for the development code. Therefore, I am opposed to the zoning changes that one person will want, that will negatively impact our rural valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Paul Howard, followed by Tim Milton.
Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Paul Howard. I live at 145 Andrew Lane, and I came here to talk about an applicant rather than the whole process. To address the process relative to this one particular piece of property, I want to point out that the county, the state, and many other, or other entities have failed absolutely to consider the uniqueness of the region that we live in, when I'm talking about the meteorological and topological aspects of that particular small region. When that over-expensive bridge was put in on 580, the original contractor had to withdraw because the wind velocity toppled one of the steel rebar structures that was to form one of the pillars. The property that the applicant is going to ask for use of is in a catastrophically high-velocity wind zone. This heavy usage of storage and, storage of materials and materials handling in that catastrophically occasionally high-velocity wind zone has not been considered by the county. It wasn't considered by the state when they put the freeway in. So at the very least, I ask you to suspend consideration of this zoning on a broad brush so that you can provide for appropriate use and not leave it just up to the special use permit application process. This condition cannot be changed. The hills create a venturi, the winds come over the mountains, and we have several spots out there that have this catastrophic wind situation. If you allow zoning that's absolutely incompatible to that in such a situation, I don't think that that is responsible activity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Tim Milton, followed by Martine Milton.
Would you state your name and address, please?
My name's Tim Milton. I live at 535 Putnam Drive in Reno. I own the home at 130 Andrew Lane, which is two houses off of 395, which is two houses to the east of Gale Willie's property that he currently owns. There is a driveway easement on the side of my, south side of my property that has access to his property that he has. It's a little narrow dirt road. His property fronts, the Steamboat Creek is in between his property and 395, which flooded severely this year, and it has probably at least four or five times in the last 25 years. The water came completely over the bridge at Andrew Lane. It was impassable. It came roaring through his property and went behind several homes, down that dirt driveway, and took out four feet of earth and shoved it down about 80 feet and over Andrew Lane. Lane, where nobody moved the dirt for at least a week or two. And I took my backhoe in there and graded it where, you know, the neighbor behind me could use that driveway. At the current time, that is the only access for Gale Willie. He's bringing trucks in and out of there every day right now. I think the big picture here is the thirty-five acres to forty acres. I know that it appears to me that it's a little convoluted, that he's using a general Washoe County, the whole region, for the forty-acre idea, thirty-five acres that he has for heavy commercial industrial use. He owns Color Rock. His whole plan is to move his operation of Color Rock onto that property. He wants to probably try to build a bridge over the Steamboat Ditch, which is in a heavy floodplain area. The house that I'm in is in a hundred-year floodplain. The house behind me, the house beside me, all the houses kind of right on that corridor of 395, including his, is in the floodplain. I think he's using the whole Washoe County idea to make it a little bit more convoluted for his property that he has right there, to try to get this approved. It's a terrible spot for him to put Reno or Color Rock there. I know that I'm a general contractor, I've rebuilt burned houses in Pleasant Valley. I know that he's having problems on South Virginia Street where his yard is now with dust, noise, angry people around it. I get stuff there from him and use it on my construction sites, I'm a general contractor. And I just think that it's a cover for him to change that property so he can use that in an industrial area in a nice private residential area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Martine Milton, she would rather not speak, but she's opposed to the item.
Okay.
And then we have Cynthia Albright, followed by Richard Mahoney.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Sure. Cynthia Albright, for the record, my address is 4495 Interlake and Court, Reno, Nevada. I'm here, first of all, welcome, nice to see you commissioners, chairman. I'm here on behalf of my friends who are in the audience and have chosen not to speak. As you can see, a lot of us are sort of here, late to the party. This was just by circumstance that somebody in this room found out about what Mr. Willie was planning on doing while at the building counter. And you can see just through a couple of phone calls, and the next thing you know, we have a room full of people who are highly interested in this project, more importantly, in this plan amendment that will affect not only their neighborhood, but potentially affect every single solitary person who lives at, near, or adjacent to general rural land use. So my comment is that I realize that you've been through this application process, and you've discussed it, and you've made recommendations. And on behalf of everybody here, although I'm representing myself and my friends, I would ask you to please reconsider those decisions. I would ask you to please consider staff's recommendation to maintain that forty-acre minimum. It was put there for a reason, because at the time, I worked for Washoe County for eight years. You know, when we did the land use and zoning transition program, when we were changing the zoning that would affect an individual property owner, we notified every one of those property owners in Washoe County for five consecutive years. And I would argue that I don't know for sure, but I highly doubt that every single property owner who could be affected by this amendment has been notified by the county. And this amendment could actually negatively impact those folks. And all of the mitigation measures that might be put in place with a special use permit may not do justice to a specific property or a specific request, such as the one that Mr. Willie is proposing on his property on Andrew Lane in Pleasant Valley. I would say that, you know, the Washoe County goals are integrity, effective communication, and quality public service. I just noticed that as I walked in here today. I know those are your goals, and if you haven't actually notified all of these people who could be affected in Spanish Springs, North Valleys, and Washoe Valley, and anywhere else where you have existing residential neighborhoods that are flanking up against general rural properties that could be converted easily with a special use permit, which we all know is sort of an ipso facto. Yeah, we think it's okay there, but we want to see some special conditions, and we certainly want to have the right to review it. And we, as a body, the planning commission, want to have a right to impose special conditions. I don't think there's any special condition that you could impose that equals a minimum parcel size, which was intended at the time the development code was written, to provide that necessary buffer. With that, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Richard Mahoney, followed by Kevin Hofer.
Please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Richard Mahoney, I live at 625 Rhodes Road. Just to piggyback a little bit on previous speaker, I got an email yesterday from a neighbor telling me about this meeting here tonight. There was no notice that I could ever recall seeing a sign or anything else. And I think she stated it very well, and I concur with her objections. My concern is, I'm on the Big Ditch Water Board. I have walked this entire property, and it's a fragile ecological site. Big Ditch runs through there, Steamboat Creek runs through there, Steamboat Creek's a twelve-month-a-year stream. And I'm worried about water quality, I'm worried about wildlife, access to water, moving a heavy industrial open-air storage site with all the attendant trucks and the activity. I just can't imagine how any of the effects of that could be mitigated, to make this residential valley and community not suffer with this kind of a use of that land. I am opposed to this amendment, I think you should at least stick to the forty-acre minimum for this kind of activity, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Kevin Hofer, followed by Jeff Cates.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Kevin Hofer at 300 Andrew Lane. Although I am very concerned with the specific development that many of my neighbors have brought up, I'm also concerned with changing the rural environment, because I also own property down in Washoe Valley. And the forty-acre minimum for wholesale storage and distribution, I think, is a good recommendation from the staff. I understand there are other items on the table that are equally heavy. If anything, I would ask you to consider adjusting those to a higher acreage usage. As we develop, especially in the south area where I live and I have additional property, I do not want to see the property values deteriorate because we're putting in a five-acre site here, and a three-acre site here, and a ten-acre site here of heavy usage, where we have primary residential and rural development, as opposed to heavy wholesale, storage, and distribution-type use, as well as the other items on that table. So I am, very short, I'm going to be real quick, I am very much in supportive of the forty-acre minimum, and if anything, would ask that that be imposed on additional heavy usage in the rural areas of south Washoe County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jeff Cates, followed by Carol Hofer.
Please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Cates, I live at 165 Andrew Lane. I'd just like to dovetail on to the previous speakers before us, and then thank you as well for saying that this application is going to affect the county at large, not just one piece of property. And so the weight of this decision is that much heavier on you guys. And I appreciate the fact that he mentioned that they tried to stay objective to the entire county and avoid taking a look specifically at this piece of property. That being said, let's talk about this specific piece of property. That being that it's a thirty-five-acre parcel, that is a waterfront parcel to all of the flood irrigation waters for the Rhodes Road, Andrew Lane, Steamboat Creek, all the way to Demone Ranch area of town. So that's an immediate impact to our water source. And in light of the recent floods that we've had, and floods that we've had for the last four decades, that piece of property is not only in the hundred-year floodplain, but within the ten-year floodplain, much of that property. And it's all very soft meadow grass land that would have to be drastically changed, I think, to be able to support heavy equipment and a rock yard as is proposed, a use of Color Rock. And you guys all know what that looks like. I moved out there four years ago. It took me ten years to purchase that home out there. My wife and I knew our entire adult life that that's where we wanted to live, and we wanted to live there for a specific reason, because it was larger rural, sort of country lane homes that were out there on their own, and that had a distinguished and slowly progressing growth rate and growth plan, and a well-established growth plan. And this violates all of that, and it violates all of that for all these people standing behind me. This piece of property is under the county's minimum forty-acre size, and we've already established that. It's utilizing right now a residential bridge and a road that is by default too narrow to establish a two-lane divider. It's in fact too narrow for the county roads department to put that divider on, and we're already having speeding issues on that road. In light of the recent and foreseeable floods, this place has a potential for fertilizers, non-native soils, potential hazmat materials to be dispersed downstream, and possibly impacting county homeowners and water systems downstream from the area. I'll abbreviate. So finally, it's requested unanimously by myself and the residents of the Andrew Lane and Rhodes Road area that you see behind me, to deny the proposed amendment and suggest an alternate location for Mr. Wiley, that is both more ecologically practical and consistent with the residents and constituents of your Washoe County. And that goes together with your mission statement up there, to provide a safe and secure and healthy community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Carol Hofer, followed by Scott Jordan.
Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Carol Hofer, and I live at 300 Andrew Lane. And I will be brief, as former people have stated the needs. Being a general for the whole county, I understand, but the person submitting this, it looks like a backdoor way-in for him to get in where we wouldn't know what was going on. And we have had enough problems there, and you're dealing also with wild horses in that area, and they do go all the way to 395 in that area. But we do have the wind and all the other stuff. I am not adjacent to his property, so I am not directly affected, but I find this can be a traffic hazard for Andrew Lane, big time, for all the things that go on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Scott Jordan, followed by Marcy Jordan.
Would you please state your name and address?
Yes, I'm Scott Jordan. I live at 605 Chance Lane, at the corner of Chance Lane and Rhodes Road in Steamboat Valley. I'm opposed to this proposed modification of the development code. I have to start by saying that I have to admire Mr. Willie's strategic decision to seek what he's seeking by way of a countywide amendment, rather than something specific for his property. One of the consequences of that is that he didn't have to give his neighbors any notice of what he was doing. And if we weren't here the last time you addressed this request, it's because none of us got any notice of it. So please take that into consideration. Also, I think Mr. Willie is attempting to get this through your commission without you remembering that your predecessors have reviewed this exact same application and denied it once before. One of my neighbors is John Rhodes, he's a second-generation resident of this valley. He couldn't be here tonight, but he wrote a short letter, and I'd like to use the rest of my time to read it to you. Dear Commissioner Chairman Barnes and members of the commission, I am a lifelong resident of Steamboat Valley, and am familiar with all development that has occurred and proposals for development in Pleasant and Steamboat Valleys throughout the last sixty years. Please be advised that substantially the same issues involved in the above application were presented by the same applicant on the same property in special use permit case number SPB 11-19-97, heard and decided by the Board of Adjustment and on appeal by the County Commission on April 8, 1998. At that time, Mr. Willie sought a special use permit for a wholesale nursery with incidental retail sales. Concerned citizens, including myself, argued that the real intent of the application was to conduct a commercial landscaping business, including wholesale and retail sales of stone and rock, which constitutes a heavy industrial use wholly incompatible with surrounding residential development, and not eligible for a special use permit in a general rural regulatory zone. County staff and the Board of Adjustment and the County Commission all agreed, and the permit was granted, but with a specific condition, that the sale of rock and stone not be allowed. That was decided back in 1997. There's more to read, I'll try to get through more of it, but a copy of this letter's been presented to your secretary. Now nineteen years later, Mr. Willie seeks to obtain the same entitlement by amending the development code to allow a heavy industrial use such as monument sales, stone yards, and open storage in a GR zone. I completely understand that the proposed amendment would apply countywide and is not technically site-specific. However, as applied to this particular applicant, his Pleasant Valley property in the foregoing history, the requested relief is totally site-specific. There's more, but I'll leave it to you to review it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Marcy Jordan, followed by Margie Beckham.
Would you please state your name and address?
Good evening, my name is Marcy Jordan, I live at 605 Chance Lane. And Chance Lane is just a little country road, it's not even paved, right off of Rhodes Road. And you see, most of these people here are Andrew Lane people, but there's a couple Rhodes Road people, because we're all connected. You drive into Rhodes Road, it's a beautiful country road, and it goes around this gorgeous meadow valley that has beautiful pastures and land for livestock and horses. And then it runs into Andrew Lane, and crosses a little bridge onto 395. So we have a little bridge on this side, we have a little bridge on this side, and this is a beautiful, I don't know, have you ever been out there? It's really a very special place, it's really a gem, and there's nothing like it in Reno or Carson City. When this bridge gets flooded, we have to go out that bridge. When we have a fire over here, the fire trucks have to use that bridge, because this bridge can't hold a fire truck. Now, we're not complaining, we like that. We're in the country, we want to stay in the country. I too believe that this was a very, very indirect way of Color Rock coming right to the south of Andrew Lane. Using Andrew Lane, we've got beautiful country homes, we've got cows, livestock, wild horses, domestic horses. We're riding our horses down the road, we're walking our dogs. This is a very private and special neighborhood. To have this rock, and this dirt, and these trucks, and this wind going on over here is really going to impact us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Margie Beckham, followed by William Naylor.
Would you state your name and address, please?
I'm Mariah Beckham, I live at 132 Andrew Lane in Pleasant Valley. We own the parcel that is contiguous with Wiley's property that's under consideration here. In addition, the dirt road people are talking about, that is our driveway that goes into our home, that he has an easement to travel over, and additionally, we have an easement to travel over his portion of this dirt road. So this isn't just a dirt road, this is our driveway that goes into our home where our children walk out for the bus and do these other particular things here. It is difficult for me to make comment today, because although he drives on our property, I got no notice of this activity at all. I gather from what people are saying, it's because it's being presented as this GR amendment rather than this parcel particularly. But it seems to me that at the But it seems to me that at the very least, the homes that he is driving by, one twenty, one thirty, one thirty-two, one thirty-six, and the Greenhouse property on one forty, which is also contiguous, should have received some indication that this was going on. We didn't have notice for the March seventh hearing. We didn't have notice for this one. So if I, as a contiguous neighbor, got no notice, I have to question the noticing procedure that's being used for actions like this. I've heard in the past that Mr. Wiley had a proposal to store the trees. He actually did that while we owned our property. We've owned our property since ninety-seven. And I had heard, although I wasn't directly related, having five little kids at the time, that the special use permit had had issues because he started storing rock there instead of just the trees. So I'm concerned that even though he has again told us that he is only going to store landscaping stuff here, from what I hear on this distribution, storage, and all this measure, he is intending to put the color rock back in there. We have the creek there, the irrigation, the groundwater that people have mentioned. Color rock is colored because it contains toxic minerals. We really don't want those things in anyone's groundwater. What I would like to see is this proposal process focused on Mr. Willie's application rather than on this general one, so that we get notice of what he's intending to do so that we can effectively comment on what he's intending to do, to restart this process with the proper notice, and then we'll all know what's actually being proposed in our community officially, and we'll be able to prepare and respond in a proper manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Naylor, followed by Herschel Rosenbaum.
Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is William Naylor, one zero zero five Dunbar Drive, Washoe Valley. I'd like to review the findings that have to be found in order to approve this particular application. I don't believe that they can be found. Number one finding must be consistent with the master plan. It is not consistent with the master plan. The South Valley's area plan, which rules, has no mention whatsoever of industrial zoning in that plan, and that's probably true of others such as the forest plan. Therefore, you cannot put an industrial application or business use into that area. This was intentional to protect the rural character and the historic character of the area, and this application has been pointed out as an end run around the master plan to allow this kind of use by using the development code to subvert the master plan. Finding number two promotes the purpose of the development code. Under the adoption of development code section, the number one purpose is to promote public health, safety, morals, convenience, and general welfare. As you've heard from a number of people here, this particular project does none of that. It is a dangerous business. It's dirty. It's dusty. It's noisy. It increases traffic, and it in no way can be construed to promote the public welfare or help the public welfare. Finding number three, response to changing conditions. As staff pointed out, there are no studies that show that this is needed in the county. This is a personal request for financial gain by an individual, and it is not a county issue, and it should not be treated as such. Staff cautions do not allow an incompatible use in the general rural area. Staff cautions do not turn general rural into an industrial zoning replacement. Staff says require that general rural parcels conform to all standards, including a forty-acre minimum. Finding number four, no adverse effects on the population and conservation elements of the master plan. This is absolutely false. Conservation element of the master plan covers water quality, air quality, dust, traffic, protecting the scenic quality of the area, which certainly this would destroy. Floodplain protection. So all of these are covered in the conservation area. So I've covered the four findings. This thing does not meet any of them. This cannot be approved. I recommend that you deny this, that you do as staff recommended. Turn a review of all of the allowed uses back over to the staff. Let them do this in a professional manner rather than bowing down to one person's desire to make money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Herschel Rosenbaum, followed by Dan Erman.
Please state your name and address.
Herschel Rosenbaum, one thirty-two Andrew Lane. I bought my house about twenty years ago, and everybody's talking about that road, as my wife mentioned, Mariah C. Becken, she's my wife, and that is our road, so we ought to know about it. And it is a very dusty road, and big trucks going over it will make dust clouds. I had a brief phone call with Mr. Willie, and he assured me there would be only trees back there, and so far, it's been only trees. No objection. But now I find out from this meeting that he wants to put color rock back there, and this parcel's surrounded by homes. It has a major creek running through it, and color rock, as my wife pointed out, and she ought to know, she's got a masters in water pollution. These rocks have toxic components in them that would invariably end up in the creek and poison the creek, and I don't think anybody wants that. I feel this parcel is not suited for this purpose, nor is any parcel in that whole area suited for this. About a decade ago, he tried this endeavor, and actually, I find out it's two decades ago, and he promised only trees, and before long, there was color rock being sold there, and the neighborhood objected, as we do so now. Right now, he's just storing trees, and that's fine, but not during early hours, thank you. I don't want a parade of heavy trucks, customer vehicles, and a cloud of toxic dust traveling across my front yard. He's alluded to a bridge, but that won't stop the dust. I also want to point out that this is not forty acres. It's thirty-nine point two, as you can tell by the county website. I also want to point out that I just can't imagine an overloaded heavy truck going over a bridge that he hasn't even built yet, trying to enter the roadway where fifty mile an hour cars are plowing through. I can't imagine how many trucks would be hit by cars. And I had a friend killed on that road, and I've seen many accidents on that road, so I really can't imagine anything like that. I hope you can't either. As Mrs. Sarah Savileczek stated, master plan trumps all. I'll remind her of that. And in conclusion, I would hope that this commission would not approve this kind of commercial business in a rural residential neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Dan Herman.
Please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. Dan Herman, Camporico Road or Camporico Lane in Spanish Springs. I thought I didn't have a dog in this fight. Boy, I sure do. Anytime a single developer is going to go in and try, and that's what I'm hearing tonight. And I'm sorry, I'm not up to speed on this whole project, but if a single developer is trying to drive development code changes, it affects everybody, and I'm hearing the whole county from Eric, Senior Planner. You know, the notice, like, these people have said the notice isn't out there. Property around my house, if they're doing a development, all the county has to do is seven hundred and fifty feet away. I mean, if you're a ten-acre lot or a twenty-acre, forty-acre lot, they might get one or two people. It's totally inadequate. Our whole system that the county has as far as notifying individuals. I looked at heavy industrial out at Spanish Springs when we were doing our allowed use tables. That's bad juju. There's some bad stuff in there. You can't let heavy industrial or even anywhere around a residential development. It's crazy. There is plenty of industrial land. If a developer wants industrial property, let him go out and get an industrial zone property to do whatever he wants to do. That's how the system works. Again, heavy industrial's not appropriate, lots of bad uses. I would take, I know this is development code, it's not about a project. Some of these people think it's about a project. It's not. This affects everybody in the county. Please go back and look at the process you did to approve this with some minor changes that was going to happen tonight, and turn the book over and write no on it, send it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you, Donna. All right. Do we have any commission questions or staff or?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Graham, do you have any questions? Mr. Ram?
Not right now.
Okay, Mr. Chesney?
Yes.
Did you hold a public workshop on this?
Yes, sir.
Was there any attendance?
No.
What's the notification requirement for a public workshop for something like this?
We are required to notice cabs. We require all, we notice the cab chairman, all cab members. We use something called the county C blast, which is a sign-up for email. I think that's what we do.
If I might, no, just for the record, the development code itself requires notice in the newspaper and notice to the CABs for development code amendments only. That's what was described. The department, however, has a policy, and it also holds what we call an all CAB slash public workshop. So we do that as an adjunct in addition to what the code requires. And as Mr. Young had pointed out, not only do we notice the CAB members, we take the extra step that who's ever on the C-mail blast, signed up for any of the five commission districts, receives that notice and invitation to attend the public workshop with a link to the proposed code amendments and the opportunity to comment in that public workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Web. Yes, Sarah.
Before I get to my questions, then, there was no staff report about outcomes from a CAB.
No.
In the March one or the?
Right, there was zero attendance at the all cab workshop.
But there wasn't, but there wasn't a specific CAB meeting?
No, there were no, there were no CAB meetings for this. It's a, we call it an all CAB meeting, but it's not technically and actually a CAB meeting. We do publish a notice of possible quorum in case we end up with a quorum. But it's, we call it the all CAB meeting, but it's not an official CAB meeting. It's, as Mr. Web indicated, it's like an open public workshop where all of those people are the ones that get specific notice.
Remember, this development code amendment is countywide. Previous development code amendment that you heard for cellulars on general rural agriculture was only to Warm Springs. So that was then specific in an offer to the Warm Springs CAB because it was specific to that one single planning area. As a countywide development code amendment affecting all general rural regulatory zones throughout the county, what we can't, we don't go out and visit each of the CABs. What we do is then notice all the CAB members and asking them to participate in this one workshop so we can gather them all together, one opportunity to have one comment answer session, discuss the code.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Sarah.
Thank, so I need to go back to, back to the beginning. When this was originally presented, and I know that I have been fixating on the forty-acre minimum, but what is actually being requested is a change from industrial to moving wholesale storage and distribution. So it's an addition of allowing this in general rural, not just the forty acres.
I'm not, I'd like to be more clear on what you're asking.
So in, on attachment C, there's not a page number here, prior to that, under wholesale storage and distribution, light or heavy, it's not allowed in general rural.
Right.
So what we, what is being asked of us is to not only allow it in general rural, but to ask a forty-acre minimum.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's staff's recommendation. The applicant's request is to allow it in general, in general rural without, with no minimum.
So what you presented to us at first is that, I mean, our, what actions we could take was to approve it with, without minimum acreage, to approve it with minimum acreage or deny it wholesale.
Yes.
Okay. And, so, I mean, I'm left with a whole lot more questions in the sense that this process is a bit fraught when we call an all cab workshop and maybe people not being fully aware. I mean, so that's just cab members, but, and then through the C-mail, and, you know, I'm going to take this opportunity to use a platform that I have not, I have been on that C-mail, but I have been mysteriously dropped from all C-mail notifications for all cabs. So I understand where people can say that this process is, is hard to follow. I will be in favor of denial of this as a total.
And if I might, for the commission's edification, again, this is a conundrum that we face. Honestly, this commission only recommends. The actual policymaking is the Board of County Commissioners. They're the ones who adopt ordinances for the county. The same conundrum applies to the county commissioners. When they consider any code amendment for any Washoe County code, they're only required to notice in newspapers. At least for the development code, for any land use code provisions, this planning commission is consulted and makes a recommendation on those code amendments. And further, the code itself requires at least notice of the CABs in addition to newspaper. Staff has taken that a step forward or further to try and do the C-mail. Realistically, and to be honest with you, there would be no measurable way nor affordable way to notice every property owner who owns a general rural property inside Washoe County of these type of amendments. Those type of financial overcosts would just run the public taxpayers' bills up. So we try and make some happy medium. And then it falls down to you as an appointed commission to do the hard job. Listen to your constituents, take your own gut feeling, talk to your neighbors. And again, I think you're on point here. Your first question you have to ask is, is the proposed use, in other words, an industrial use type of wholesaling, storage, and distribution heavy? Based on the definition, by the way, that you see on page, I just had it and closed it, page four of the staff report, is that appropriate in general rural? And then, once you make that determination, is it appropriate in the general rural regulatory zone? The next question that you have before you is, should there be a minimum acreage? Staff's recommendation was forty acres minimum, or you could say no. Again, once you get to those two, you come to conclusion. Of course, you can also say, right from the get-go, I don't believe that's an appropriate use in a general rural regulatory zone, and then you can make that recommendation appropriately. That's what I would encourage a consideration of planning commission as you move forward.
And in my past experience serving on the cab, and with all of my reading of the plans and all of that, I'm thinking I have now made an incorrect assumption because I had always believed that classification for general rural, that minimum acreage was always forty acres.
And you would be correct that minimum acreage is forty acres, but you also have to remember that through the process, and actually, Ms. Albright mentioned that, we went from a old zoning system back in the late sixties, seventies, eighties to a one-map system in the late eighties, early nineties, and then back to a two-map system. And because of that, general rural initially was really developed as a holding area. It could be lands that had some sort of constraint on them, either wetlands or steep slopes or floodplains, or they could just be simply areas that there was no planned development. A lot of the county was fitting into that category at that time. In the old zoning that was prior to nineteen eighty, that actually fell into what we called an M-three open zoning that then equated to a general rural. We went back to the two-map system and even from the one-map system where we took our master plans and equated that to zoning. We had a lot of parcels that are smaller than forty acres that are designated general rural for the various reasons that they may have been M-three zoning or other type of old zoning that was a development constraint or simply some other zoning that fit into those categories we had when we went to the master plan. So you have many properties throughout the county that, not only with general rural, but I have, for instance, you may have low-density rural properties with zoning in Spanish Springs that are five acres, when that minimum is not five acres. It's twenty, okay, or ten, actually, ten acres. So you have the ability that you have that. So you have the ability that you have that mismatched zoning. So what Mr. Young is portraying in the staff report is staff's professional opinion that we should attempt to not perpetuate the use of these non-conforming smaller lots when you have these sort of considerations. But again, that's the planning commission's discussion consideration and a recommendation as the planning commission to the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, also, I'll point out that last month, what the planning commission actually voted in favor of here was the amendment with the 40-acre limitation. That's what you actually approved or recommended approval of last month.
Right. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Haran?
Well, I think that what we've seen tonight is the, a little bit of the law of unintended consequences when you have a amendment that is driven by an applicant, a single applicant. You know, it's, maybe we didn't do the right thing last month.
Any, any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, seen none, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission for discussion. Do we have any discussion?
I'd like.
Yeah, Sarah?
To hear, to hear her master plan statement.
My magic, you know. Well, and, and thank you, Commissioner Haran, for bringing that to our, I mean, it is an unintended consequence. And, and yes, area plans trump everything. So with that, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, any discussion before she makes a motion?
Well, I think that I'd like to reiterate the fact that, you know, what we've heard tonight is, you know, we were victims of the unintended consequences, and we should recognize those.
Exactly, exactly.
And, and, you know, I don't believe that it does make any of the findings particularly. So I would, when we make a motion, I would support the denial of it.
Any other discussion? Okay, seen none, then I would call for a motion.
Okay.
Sarah?
Unless Commissioner Chesney.
You have the floor, trust me.
Okay. I move, after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, that the Washoe County Planning Commission deny WDCA 16-0001. And the findings is that it is not consistent with the master plan because it is not included in the area plan that promotes the purpose of the development code. There is an industrial allowance and that this type of development or not development, use is already allowed in industrial. And... How many findings do I have to make, Mr. Edwards?
You have to be able to make all the findings. So if you can't make any of them, just state why, and that should be it.
Okay, okay. Cannot make any of the findings based on what I've already stated numerous times.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Sarah, a second by Larry. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seen none, I'd call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you.
Yeah, it will be done really nice.
We'll go to item 10A, future agenda items.
If I could remind the audience members to please keep it quiet, the planning commission is still in session. So if you need to talk, if you can move to the foyer and have your talks outside, please. Thank you.
I know, I know. Right, right. Okay, item 10A, future agenda items. Commissioners, have any future agenda items? Okay, seen none, then requests for information from staff? Seen none of those, we'll go to number 11A, directors and legal counsels items, report on previous planning commission items.
The only item I had was a development code amendment that you just reheard, so that was it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Webb. Legal information and updates, Mr. Edwards?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Edwards. Any general public comment, Donna?
There are no requests.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.
We tried, we tried.